I'm going to call a meeting later. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local.
Mochler.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approve agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. In the minutes, we don't have those, right?
No.
I don't have them ready quite yet, no.
Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none, meet with the planning commission. Now, are they, are we doing this jointly?
Uh, let's look, we have to call ourselves, or don't we need a, do we need a joint meeting?
That's what you want to do, right? Okay, so before you do that, Jay, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Phyllis. I have to sit on the planning commission's side.
I'll call the planning commission. Joe.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Here. Party.
And do we need a motion to?
I think just let the room start.
Okay.
You, uh, you announced the, uh, four accounting measures and planning here. I didn't wish to.
Okay, we are now in a joint meeting with planning commission and the board of the county commissioners, Clay County.
And then Jay makes an, uh, let's see, uh, which member of the planning commission will make a motion recommending approval of the ordinance from board of planning commissioners so we can begin discussion?
I'll make a motion. A second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. So now we open a public hearing. Proponents of the temporary ordinance. Shall be heard. And I can make this clear to everybody, all we're doing here today is saying that we're not going to adopt new rules until state knows. So it's either for or against legislation. Hearing no proponents, uh, any opponents to the temporary ordinance. Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Discuss the temporary ordinance. Okay, uh, planning commission votes on resolution, recommend, recommend approval of temporary ordinance, uh, to describe property to the board of county commissioners. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries.
And the county commission has its first reading of ordinance 2021 dash oh two. Is the oh three now, or do we do that separately?
Oh, three is with the.
Right.
Yeah, we do that.
Okay.
Okay. We got to set the date time for the second reading.
Okay, the second reading is, will be.
Carry.
Carry.
We can, we can do this one of two ways. We can either have a special meeting next week because it would be over five days in between the readings then, um, in which case that would get it published and passed quicker before that July first date. Otherwise, we could have it at the next regular commission meeting at the end of the month.
Which we're having on the 22nd.
Oh, you are going to move it to the 22nd then, okay.
So on the 22nd.
That's good then.
Of June. At what time?
Should we just say nine fifteen?
Do they, does the planning commission have to leave there?
No.
So it's just us or whatever, I guess. We do the first or whatever.
And at courthouse and. Then there's, is there a motion to adjourn?
So would we, would you want me to write the file?
Yeah.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the, uh, planning commission.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second, need a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Planning commission's adjourned.
Fast and painless.
I understand that you've been through a lot of, but a whole lot of.
Yeah.
Good my roles to say nothing.
Yeah, formalities.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, planning commission. And I will turn the meeting back to our chair.
Let's see, all we've got is the jail boarding budget discussion. Andy's not on.
I put that on the agenda from last meeting, um, mainly to discuss, you know, whether you guys want to pursue doing an opt out or, or some sort of other measure for next year. That's the deadline for that's coming up.
Yeah, and I, you know, I had sent an email around to everyone, um, uh, last week after the meeting because, um, I had heard from, um, uh, uh, the vice president of the board of ed and asked them, you know, what, what did they have, um, or what do they have? And how much did they pay to get it, um, pre-bond issue? And basically what they said is that, um, their consulting consultant, um, you know, put together a drawing of the building as part of, you know, what, no extra charge. I mean, it was, um, you know, they, they chose the site and, um, they got a drawing of the building and a functional description of what it would include and, um, that that was, that was enough. So I think if we had a location and a simple architectural rendering, um, you know, I, I, you know, and a list of, you know, the, what exactly would be in the building, I, I think that would be enough to go out to bond. I mean, I, I don't think, I, it doesn't make any sense to do, um, uh, you know, detailed architectural renderings, um, before, before going out to bond. That, that's a huge financial risk, but, you know, to have something, um, you know, in the way of this is exactly what it will look like, um, and, you know, we, we don't need roof details and, you know, where things join and, uh, you know, structural supports and the rest of it, but, you know, I, I think we, we probably do need a, um, you know, a rendering of what it would look like, and that does not take an architect very, very long to do. You know, it, it should be, it should be minimal. And, and fast, I mean, it, you know, it's something that architects do pretty, pretty quickly. So I, I, you know, I, that's what makes sense to me.
I'm confused, Betty.
Yeah, I am too.
The detailed one is what you asked for, leading up to the last vote. Last week you said, you know, we got to have a detailed one and we got to have the site. So now, because we did have a rendering of what the building was going to look like, conceptual design, and you all along said that that's not good enough, that's not what the people want.
Yeah, I, I think what, what we did have was sort of, uh, uh, we had blocks and, um, and what, what the school board has done is a little different. It actually shows what the building would look like from the street, um, and.
We have that.
Yeah, so. To me, uh, so looking at those drawings, that is, that is not what the street view of the build, I mean, people can't tell from that series of drawings, um, what. You know, I can see you looking at me, Travis, like you're not.
I'm confused, I mean, I'm not the only one.
No, so the, but what we need is a street view of the building. If what, I mean, the board of ed is managing to get support with a street view of the building, I think we could get support with a street view and architectural rendering of the building, um, and.
What building are we talking about?
The jail. The jail and law enforcement center.
And I thought the opt out that we're talking about is for the budget for next year.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, what, what I have here is jail boarding budget discussion. Okay, okay.
Because we've got to come up with the money somewhere.
Okay.
I mean, there's going to be extra money that's not in the budget.
Okay.
Or not in the account. We could put it in the budget, but depends on where we want to get to on reserve.
So, Andy, how isn't here, it might be hard to, to talk about without Andy.
Do we have an estimate of what we're going for if we're going just for the jail and law enforcement?
Yeah, we need that.
Okay, do you mean for the budget for next year or?
Yeah.
What we need to budget for housing? For housing prisoners.
My mind was going to the whole thing, but.
We're just, I think we just need to worry about the, the housing for right now, what we're going to have to.
Yeah, the excess.
Yeah.
The excess is quarter of a million likely. We don't really have a good.
He thought two hundred and fifty thousand over this year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Over this year. Over this year.
Yeah.
If we stay at the numbers that we're at, if we get back to two thousand nineteen numbers, that'd have been seven hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be, you know, I think it would be helpful if, you know, we had something in writing that, you know, laid out, um, the parameters, um, what it would look like in a high year, what it would look like in a low year.
We're talking about only what it costs to take our inmates to other jails.
Right, exactly.
Travis.
No, I understand, but, but we have to estimate.
He's just walking into his office, so he should be on shortly.
Thanks.
Yeah, but I, I think it would be helpful to have some numbers in writing and, um, you know, some, some, some choices in terms of estimates of what, uh, what we might expect to pay.
What choice?
Mm-hmm.
Travis.
Yeah.
I think, I think what Andy was getting at last week, and we'll get him out here pretty shortly, is he actually was giving us an estimate of what he thought. Right. Because he was going by twenty twenty rule, what you have for inmates in twenty twenty. If you go back to what the volume we have in two thousand nineteen, it's certainly going to be higher.
Yes.
And so, and plus, it depends on where he can house them too. If we have to go to Sioux Falls, it's a lot more expensive. So in a way, he, he said the two hundred and fifty thousand, what I gathered, was to finish out this year, and then the next year would be the kind of unknown a little bit, but he can kind of give us a ballpark figure, and that's all he's going to be able to do.
And so, so this year.
And this would not be known until that, you don't know if Union County can take them or Sioux Falls or Yankton until probably that week, because if they're full, we're going to have to go to the more expensive.
What I understood was that, um, next year, he would be asking for an additional two hundred and fifty thousand over the seventy thousand that was already budgeted like this year, so it would be two fifty plus seventy, and he can clarify that here as soon as I get into the meeting, but, um, so that's what I understood last week.
So the, the discussion that we need to have here, and it doesn't have to end today either at this time, because we got to be, we got to be at the city at nine thirty, right?
Yeah.
Um. If we opt out for the budget and how much, or do we start cutting non-mandated programs? Because there is hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a non-mandated that we pay every year.
Right.
Yeah, and it looks like from all the, that was great information, Carrie, thank you. It looks like from that information, July fifteen is the deadline for opt out. My suggestion would be that if we're going in that direction, um, that we do some serious, uh, like public information campaign before, um, July fifteenth and before we pass it, because once we pass it, um, there's a certain number of days to gather signatures for a referendum, and, you know, if people don't understand what it is, you know, they're just going to vote no on opt out. And so I, I, I think we need to do some public information, um, in advance of, uh, of, of that. And, you know, we also, I, I don't, how much should we have in emergency and contingency this year?
So each year, the commissioners have a contingency budget, and, you know, that's, it's been a hundred and twenty thousand in the past. Um, for the past several years, it's been used up, so I was actually going to suggest at budget time that maybe you guys consider raising that for next year because we've been consistently using it over the last several. Um, other than that, our cash reserves have been sitting around thirty percent, you know, twenty-eight to thirty-two roughly given, any given year.
So in your estimation, we should take it from cash reserves for this year instead of from contingency?
We'll have to do some sort of a supplement, yeah.
So we would need an estimate of what that would be from, um, from Andy.
What, just as a refresher and for public and for reference, what are the non-mandated programs?
Your libraries, uh, the senior citizens center. The, what is it, Clay County con- conservation?
Yeah.
What else is there?
Fair board, um.
Fair board, the mental health, is that?
Senior citizens center, Dakota senior meals, um, mental health is something we're just going to have anyway.
Okay. I couldn't remember if Dr. Sanage comes over.
Um, Lewis and Clark, I, I think would be a non-mandated, I, I think it falls into that category, yeah, that's who he's with.
What about food pantry?
Uh, food pantry, um, Austin Whittmore House, I'm just trying to think off the top of my head, all those other, um, teen courts, uh.
Over museum.
The WH over yep, the museums, national music museums, arts council, um.
Do we give some to, uh, uh, lost my train of thought now, nevermind.
Historic preservation commission.
Yeah.
That one's an outside grant, but we give two thousand dollars in matching funds, so I mean, that part is, they have to match for, in order to receive the grant.
Yeah, there's, now, working from the other end, if we went for the full ninety mil, what, what kind of money would we raise by that opt out?
Roughly a million.
Yeah.
Probably a million.
Because I believe, well, the last I checked, we were at one point one billion.
Right.
In assessed, so that gets us about a million dollars.
And I don't know if you read the statute, I, it talks about buildings, I don't know if jail boarding would be part of that.
Yeah.
You know, unless you were to do the ninety cents per thousand Roden Bridge levy and not transfer as much money from county general to Roden Bridge for next year, and that's, you know, that's something that you could do.
So those are only two opt out options?
You could do an, a resolution for opt out, which, you know, that and the, the ninety cents per thousand Roden Bridge are both preferable, but you could do an opt out resolution for a certain dollar amount for a certain number of years.
The one about the, with the bridge in Rhodesville, I, I kind of agree with what you said, that you, it muddies the water pretty bad.
It does.
It looks like you're moving stuff from.
Yeah, and, and I think you have to have, um, you know, specific projects, but we could do that with micro-surfacing and things like that, I mean, those are specific projects, you could do that, but it does make things kind of muddy. It would be a lot cleaner just to do an opt out.
I think the big thing is, is if you look at it, okay, if I'm, if I've got a bridge out there that I want to put in, and all of a sudden you moved money from one place to another and really didn't do my bridge, it would not be a good deal. I mean, you could have, you could have backlash from that, I think, and that's kind of what you were saying.
Yeah, so that money that would come in, that ninety cents per thousand that would come in, would have to be used for specific projects, it goes into its own special fund, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, Mike, I mean, I, I, I just think that would be impossible to sell, and the likelihood of a referendum would be high, and explaining how we're doing it would be almost impossible, yeah.
Is there any possibility of going for the opt out for purchase of land and final design? For the actual structure, of which then it brings up whatever else we might find for the, um, jail boarding? If it's, that is for a building?
I mean, you can opt out for anything you want and any amount you want, as long as that mill levy doesn't exceed the maximum that's in statute, so.
Which is twelve dollars, right?
Yeah, I think it's twelve dollars off the top of my head.
Oh, really? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, right now, the city's hovering around four, four and a half, so, yeah, that would be a lot, for the county, not the city.
Do we have a choice?
Yeah, there's a choice.
Okay.
But I think we better, uh, um, do a recess, we got to get to the city in seven minutes.
Yes.
And we'll come back.
So what I'm going to do then, just for the benefit of people that are sitting on the meeting, while we head over to city hall, I'm just going to pause this recording on this, and I'm going to leave this new meeting open, so that when we get back, we can come back to it.
Okay. Yeah. We're back in session. So I, I mean, we need to brainstorm on what we want to do for next year's budget, how we want to, how we want to address it.
Now, the opt out, Carrie says, can be for any purpose if we, uh, the two, the two statutes that we, that we were, were in our packet were mainly for building projects or road maintenance.
There was, um, the, the third page, the third page was the opt out statute, and then there was also that booklet from the Department of Revenue that just kind of gives you the overview of it.
I see. But if I'm reading it right, you can go up to ninety cents, correct? You don't have to go the whole ninety.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean.
And that one can be set for years, right?
Right.
Opt out can be for a number of years, yeah, whatever you said, um, and the opt out is not limited to the ninety cents, that's, you know, whatever dollar amount you choose to opt out for.
Oh, okay.
Right, because I think one of the examples was at like a hundred thousand dollars, and they took it over like three years or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, or like, for example, um, Vermillion School Board has an opt out, the school district, and they get, can't remember if it's eight hundred or eight hundred and eighty thousand per year for, you know, X number of years, I think it might have been five, so they just chose their dollar amount that they needed and the number of years that they needed.
My immediate thought is going for an opt out, and what would one point two mil be? And do for a four year, which.
How much money, you mean, would that generate?
Or how much would it generate, and how much does it put on a, on a house? On a, of, yeah, per, per thousand?
It was ninety cents per thousand, right?
No, that's ninety, I said, going for the total of one point two million.
Oh, okay.
Then how much is it per?
So if you chose one point two million on the opt out resolution, you would get that per year.
Right.
So whatever you, you choose what you want per year, and then you would choose how many years you wanted it, and that's how the, the resolution gets written.
Basically, was saying four years.
Yeah.
That would put, what, ninety, you could have a hundred bucks for a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
One point two million.
Yeah.
Forty, I mean, yeah.
Am I figuring that right?
It'd be close.
Our forty-one million was going two hundred per thousand, wasn't it?
One, one fifty-seven. For a hundred thousand.
Yeah, so Carrie, it, it looks like, um, if we were to do one for, uh, if we were to opt out, basically to directly, um, pay for the increased cost of the jail, we'd be using ten dash twelve dash thirteen point one, um.
Sounds, sounds right, I'd have to look that up.
Yeah, which actually allows you to increase the amount of revenue payable from property taxes in excess of the limitation provided, um. And that would also allow us to do it for subsequent years with the limitation on the amount of revenue payable from property taxes provided under ten dash twelve dash thirteen.
So the opt out statute, for anybody that's listening and, and is interesting, interested in reading that, is, um, ten dash thirteen dash thirty-six. And then it refers back to ten dash twelve, um, later in the language of the statute.
Can we ask Andy what he would, if it went back to two thousand nineteen's?
I think he's on here.
Yeah. I think what we ought to ask him for is his recommendation of, of a dollar amount of an opt out. Yeah.
That's true.
Are you talking about for the balance of this year or for twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-two, I think.
Well, in twenty twenty-two, I'm just going to guess that we're going to, especially if we, if we average, uh, twenty inmates per day, um, which is, is realistic, because that's about where we were in twenty nineteen. If I figured eighty-five dollars a day, which is kind of halfway between a Minnehaw County hold and a Union County hold, um, that would be six hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred dollars is what it would cost us. I, I hope that you. I, I hope that Union County can continue to take our inmates as a $20 per, per day, per inmate savings. If we can hold all 20 per, at a time in Union County, we'd be at 474,500. So, so that's what you're, you're kind of looking at somewhere between, you know, roughly 500,000 to 600,000. And that's, that's presuming that we're gonna hold that average daily population. We have a, I think we have 11 boarded out right now with three in, in our jail, waiting to be determination on where they're gonna go. And so I think that, that 15 plus is definitely reasonable to assume that we're gonna be in that 15 to 20 range even by the end of this year. So I think, I think we should plan for a 20, 20, average daily population of 20 for the next year. So if you look from our recommendations, 620,500.
So that's gonna be above what you spent this year?
That's for 2022.
Total? That'd be a total for 2022.
Yeah. Not my total budget, just my total boarding, boarding line.
Total boarding. But what did you budget for this year for boarding?
70,000. Yeah, I have 70,000 budgeted. I have 40,000 of that still left. That'll be gone by August.
So what do you think the rest of the year is gonna cost then?
Rest of this year, I'm speculating, this is based on an average daily population of 15, held in Union County at their rate, that I will run short to the amount of 137,000, say 138,000. Cause I, I'm estimating our costs for the rest of this year, holding 15 inmates per day in Union County to 177,900. And we have 40,000 left in that line as we sit here right now. So that's gonna leave me short 137,792. So 137, 138,000 is what I expect to be short in 2021. And we're doing our best to, to really monitor who goes and when they go. Holding them here. We're not, we're not gonna hold them here for the full 72 hours. If it looks like they're not gonna be leaving here, they move on. But, um, you know, some of them, if they think they might bond out, we'll hold them a little while. We're trying to mitigate that cost as best we can. But that's, my expectation is a shortage of 138,000 in 2021.
Andy?
Yes.
Uh, if, I know what your budget, you, you said that for housing people other places with $70,000. But since you're putting everybody in another place and you're not putting them here, is there some savings here that you're not, that would be offset some of that 625,000?
Glad you mentioned that. I forgot to tell you that. I do expect to probably have a, oh, you know, I haven't really run the numbers, but in the prisoner meals, that's a $57,000 budget line. We haven't quite spent half of that. Pizza, Pizza Ranch gave us a real good bid. They've been doing pretty good, but we have 39,000 left in that right now. I haven't paid maids meals yet. But, um, that hasn't come out there. So I'm gonna say we've got about 37,000. I would think that we're probably gonna spend in the hundreds of dollars per month, holding inmates or feeding inmates as opposed to thousands going forward. I honestly just don't have that, that number. But I, I would speculate we'll be able to apply probably 30,000, 25 to 30,000 of that to this, uh, to this cost. So then we're looking at, instead of 138, you might be looking at, you know, 118 or maybe even, even less, maybe 110 for this year. And, and then I would, I would adjust next year, that line to next year's budget as well.
The one thing I question is though, since you're not gonna have very many prisoners here, you're gonna have a, I mean, we've always had a tough time getting bids anyhow for meals. I would assume that it's even gonna get tougher because somebody's gonna say, well, I don't want to feel all meals over there for four people.
I agree. And, and I think that that might be a problem. Colin has been, been very gracious working with us and understands that this could affect his bottom line. But it is what it is. If we don't have a bidder, if Hy-Vee or, or Pizza Ranch doesn't bid next year, you know, what we'll probably do is a frozen dinner situation. It, it isn't like we're gonna feed them TV dinners for six months, you know? I, I, again, that 72 hour length of stay kind of allows us to do things we wouldn't have done otherwise without really causing harm. When I was a jailer, we fed them TV dinners seven days a week. And, um, and, and, and that, but eventually we, we found we couldn't keep doing that. And, and we started doing what we're doing now. But that's what I would probably do is, is probably a, you know, packaged dinners and microwaving them for the few that we have in custody if we don't have bids. And maybe that'll be the way we go anyway. We'll see.
Is the fuel increase gonna be significant or minuscule?
I, I don't know how significant that'll be. I, I know, I know that our transport van will be on the road more. But, you know, it, it might keep deputies from these longer transports often as well. So I don't know how significant it's gonna be. It will increase, but certainly. I could try to do some projections on that, assuming, uh, say, a round trip or two to El Point per day is probably a safe bet. I can project that a little bit.
Is there any other special safety equipment that's needed in the van that's being, they're used for transport?
Well, we're, we're actually, as we speak, I'm literally exchanging emails with the jail staff because I had directed them to make sure we have eight sets of restraints for the van. So we're not grabbing them from patrol cars. And, uh, well, there's, there's some costs there. Those leg irons are in the neighborhood of a 150 dollars a set. And I was looking for, you know, eight sets. So, um, yeah, we, we have a few on hand now and we have, the deputies have theirs assigned to them. But, uh, we're probably looking at, at spending a thousand dollars or so on, on restraints this year now. I, let's see, I think that, I think I have the money for that in my budget this year. So I, I'm, I'm not too worried about that for this year. And that would be essentially a one-time expense.
Thank you.
And I threw a lot of numbers at you guys. So if you need anything else, repeat it, just let me know. Cause I, I don't give you just one answer. You ask how much and I tell you, well, depends. So.
It does.
I'll, I'll, you know, I, again, my, my, my estimation for a shortage this year, assuming the savings in meal costs, I'd probably safely say 110,000 shortage this year. And next year we'd be looking at 620,500 as, as boarding. And, um, and then with some savings for meals. So you could probably figure 600,000. I'd say 600,000 next year is a safe number to, to give you.
Want to ask if you figured in the, the bounce from Dakota Days, but.
Usually they're out. They don't have to.
They're in and out. Yeah.
Yeah. Dakota Days is, uh, there is an expense to that and we have it anyway. And that's overtime. And, um, because we have additional staff in, but we rarely feed those arrestees. They, they are usually gone by 10 AM the next morning, if not that, you know, before morning. So I don't expect a lot of additional jail costs other than the overtime that we always have.
Well, it looks to be like if we're gonna opt out, we better plan on opting out for 600,000. Just to be on the safe word.
Unless you want to burn through some savings.
Not real bad. I mean, I mean, we can do a little of both. I mean, I, I wouldn't have a problem of doing, you said there was like 150,000 in these special interests.
There is.
There's. And I guess personally, I wouldn't mind doing a little of both. And because that way people would realize that what we're trying to do. And that's not all just dropped on one group, you know, I guess.
When will the budget packet be put together, Karen?
The budget packet? Um, I usually have those ready by July 1st.
And we've got to have this decision made by 15?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I have turned mine into Carrie just because I was waiting to see where we, what happened here. So I'll, I'll have that to her soon. One thing I was gonna mention to you folks is I've been communicating with the Lincoln County Sheriff and, uh, you know, they had a similar issue that failed. They, they intend, is, is his understanding that they're gonna pursue a courthouse without the jail and continue to not run a jail, kind of the opposite of, of what we're looking at. He said they are paying in the neighborhood of $2 million a year to Minnehaw County alone for housing inmates. And they, their, their inmate numbers are just a little over double ours. So I don't think our projections are too far off. Let's say in 600,000 at, at, at 20, because if we get to 25, then we're, we're getting close to a million then.
Lincoln's building a courthouse?
If that, he said that they're looking at the opposite of what we're talking about, where we're talking about leaving the courthouse out of the project and pursuing the jail and safety center. And he, he said they're doing the opposite and not pursuing the jail and just fixing their courthouse.
Didn't they just remodel that in the last 10 years?
Yeah.
Well, they did, but they regretted it after they did it.
Oh, I know that.
And, and I think that in the process, when they built on and cut off the ability to do that third floor, that really hurt them because now they don't have any room to expand and they're out of space.
That's one of the ones we visited, correct?
No, we didn't.
We didn't visit Lincoln County, but I mean, I've, I've been there and I've talked to the, the previous auditor. So.
The reason I mentioned that is I just wanted you folks to know that I, I, I think these numbers are defensible and I, and I think it also gives us an idea of where we're going. And, um, in, in a long term, we should, we should be expecting a million dollars a year to be going out of county. And, and, and not too far. I'm not talking 30 years. Long before that, I think we'll be sending a million dollars a year out of county if we don't get a jail bill. At the same time, and I, I'm sorry, I keep jumping in, but, um, the, uh, it was asked of me in the facilities planning meeting, uh, last week about potential revenue from boarding. And, um, you know, I can actually project that somewhat based on the number of beds we have, minus our average daily population, keeping a few beds available to us. I can, I can actually project year, year by year, what that number might be. And Turner County does not have a jail and is not pursuing one. They don't have the, the population to really justify it. So I think that we can, we can count on renting certain number of beds to help offset our costs if we build one. And, and that isn't to say we're building it for that purpose, but I don't think, I, I don't feel too uncomfortable based on the long-term partnership we've had with Turner County to continue to serve Turner County and help us out in the process. So, um, I think that we can definitely project some revenue there. And I can give you some numbers when that time comes.
Anybody have anything else? Got a lot to think about till, by next week.
That's for sure.
Or in the next couple of weeks, I should say.
Well, I think we got some, your information is very helpful, Carrie. I think that's kind of gets us going the right way.
And at least, at least gives you some ideas of the different routes you could take. But I think definitely the opt out is probably the cleanest route.
Yeah. And I, I just did some very rough calculations and without counting, you know, on any other revenue or cutting anything else, it looks like the mil rate increase, if we were to add a total of 600,000, the budget would be like about point 54.
Sounds roughly about right.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it, it's a rough back of the envelope calculation, but. And, you know, if we can cut other places, then, you know, there might be, or raise revenue in other places, there might be, we might be able to get it down to half a mil.
What was that?
Yeah. If we were to be able to either raise revenue or cut costs in some other place in addition, as Mike suggested, you know, we might, we might be able to hold that to like half a mil.
Unfortunately, there's nowhere else to really raise revenue.
Yeah, raising the taxes is our revenue stream.
Right. The only revenue stream that we actually have is jail by pricing, by housing other visitors from other places. And that's a kind of a wash.
Yeah.
But I, you can't depend on, that's not. Revenue is something you have to have every year, that you can say, okay, I got this much coming in. Can't go ifs and whats, unfortunately. But.
Any increase in, um, in the, um, property valuation in the past year?
We always do have some growth. We're allowed to increase our, our revenue from taxes received in the last year by growth plus CPI. CPI is 1.2%. I don't have growth numbers yet this year. They're usually about a percent. Some years they're a little more, some are a little less.
What are they usually?
Mostly about a percent.
About one, did you say?
Yeah. Like I said, some are a little more and some are a little less, but usually it's right around a percent. So. And then when you look at, you know, things like health insurance increases and raises and things like that, some of that eats that up a little bit. Yeah. Kind of a wash. Sometimes we come out a little ahead, but. And I always budget higher for the health insurance increases. Because sometimes you never know. Some years we might have a 10 to 13% increase. Other years it's 2%. We never know that until like February. So we can't really project that.
If you don't mind, I was gonna just suggest also, and, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with the 600,000 to cover the inmates. And I'm not asking you to go more, but, you know, just understand that that's based on 20. There were many times in 2019, we were at 25 inmates. And, um, you know, so that, that number could go up. I, I know Alexis has, has had concerns over just the cost of housing these inmates out of county, possibly affecting decisions. And, uh, and I think we need to make sure that we're, we're focusing on public safety and, and not the, these expenses completely. You know, obviously we want to be thoughtful of these costs. But, you know, we might see those numbers after this COVID. This COVID really kind of threw things out of whack in terms of the, the increases. Although if I look back to past 10 years, we had down years then too. And, um, and think, and, but it's still progressed at the rate of, you know, 0.75 inmates per day each year. And I, and I think we're probably gonna see us coming back to that. So, I, I think 20 is a good number to, to estimate on in 2022, but I won't, I won't be surprised to see it, uh, sent, especially on occasion reaching 25 again in the next year. And hopefully that's be short terms. But 2019 was, was, uh, there was a lot of inmates in here that year.
Anybody have anything else? Entertained a motion to adjourn. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion passes.